Called order the regular meeting of the Grant County Commission. Welcome everybody, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the nearest symbol of our heritage among the United Nations.
Can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda if there's no changes needed?
Second.
The motion is second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify five, say nine. Motion passes. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period, speakers will be limited to five minutes. If you would like to discuss an item in more depth, you may request to be placed on the future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. Public input. Please come forward and state your name for the record. You have to talk fairly close to the mic.
Okay, my name is Marshall Lamar. I live on Little Walnut Road. My wife is Sandy here, and we felt we needed a little more information to be knowledgeable about some of the issues that you are going to make a decision on. We thought today, but we don't see it on the agenda. In the past few years, we've had our property taxes go up hundreds of dollars, and our evaluations gone down, and we don't mind buying service. Just giving raises without additional attention to the needs of the county is a concern that we have, and we noticed over the last couple of years some 20 percent, and now some eight or nine percent raises. Are these new services, or are they just adding to administrative cost? We see deputy cars parked because they do not have enough petroleum to patrol the areas. Are we increasing this, or are we getting new services as a result of some of these additional kind of interface 20 percent, eight percent raises while the rest of the business community and contractual community is taking losses? So we're seeing a discrepancy and a vacuum begin to develop between government offices and service community that what's supposed to serve. And indeed, unemployment is one of the highest in the state. This is really a difficult thing to digest. So we want more information, so we do not mind paying for the programs just to raise salaries for the same services, so that's an issue. Thank you very much.
Any other public input?
James Baldwin, District Three County resident. I'm sure that you commissioners, as well as I hope the public, has read this bulletin, which is the General Election Voter Guide, because it contains the amendments and the bond issues. I'm very pleased, very pleased, with how Grant County has presented itself here, because Grant County is not in here for any handouts, any bond issues, for any services whatsoever. I will point out, however, much to my dismay, that Rio Reba County is in here for a total of eleven grants, eleven requests, in the amount of $608,930. And this amounts to $15.29 per person in Rio Reba County that we are, in Grant County and elsewhere in the state, supporting them on their particular bond needs. I'm very, again, very pleased that Grant County is living within its fiscal limits. I do concur that our taxes have gone up, and I hope that we will not have any Fort Barrow projects that would cause it to rise even higher. And Fort Barrow would include the facade, $2.6 million expenditure on the convention center. It would include putting in a pipeline from the Tri-City wastewater treatment plant up to the new Fort Barrett Hospital, going across public property, which there could be eminent domain involved. But I do commend us for living within our means. Thank you.
Any further public input? Seeing none, we'll move on. Minutes, approve or disapprove the October 11th, 2012 regular meeting minutes?
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes for October 11th, 2012.
Can I second? The motion is proper second to approve the October 11th, 2012 regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify five, say nine. Motion passes. Financial reports. Approve or disapprove October 22nd, 2012 expenditure report? We had gone through this at the work session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the October 22nd, 2012 expenditure report.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the October 22nd, 2012 expenditure report. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify five, say nine. Motion passes. New business. Approve or disapprove the appointment of three members to the Grant County Food Policy Council?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, there's been three members brought forth to be part of the Food Policy Council. Sonny McFerrin is a retired individual in town who was marketing director for Heath Regional Medical Center. Ken Barr from Black Hawk Garden. And John Song is a small grower in the Members Valley. These are positions that are open on that Food Policy Council that will help them easier for them to reach their quorum, and as we spoke on Tuesday, they've asked for some bylaw changes that Mr. Gorman and I are reviewing and looking at, and will come in front of the commission at a later date to try and make it easier for them to do business as the Food Policy Council.
Were these the only three that buy it, or the only three that are handed to us?
These are the only three that were propped.
Chairman Cass, I wish to be so named three members to the Grant County Food Policy Council.
Can I second? The motion is proper second to appoint the three members that have applied to the, or the three people that have applied to the Grant County Food Policy Council. Is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Baldwin?
James Baldwin, District Three County resident. How much authority will these people be able to exercise over the food services that are provided either by the county, or by the schools, or provided by restaurants and food dispensers in the county?
No authority. They do give out information, they do give out suggestions, but no authority. They're a group that is trying to put together some policies that will have to come in front of the commission if they have any policies, and they're also trying to help people get grants, to help grow the sustainability of foods grown in Grant County area. But it doesn't regulate what people have to eat, or where they have to buy food, or how they have to buy it. It's just trying to promote the local growers so that they can get a bigger hold in the community, and maybe try selling some of their products to the community, because right now it's too hard for them to compete with the large, out-of-town vendors to sell produce to the schools.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify five, say nine. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove intergovernmental donation of an industrial washing machine to the village of Santa Clara? John went over this at the work session. It's a washing machine we're not using, so I'd accept a motion. Is there anything to approve?
I'll second.
There's a motion to approve the donation of an industrial washing machine to the village of Santa Clara. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify five, say nine. Motion passes. Contracts and agreement. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A-1247, sub-grant agreement with the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management, in the amount of $50,665. We went over this at the work session also. It's for radios and
Twenty-four thousand for mobile radios, six thousand six hundred and sixty-five for fire incident response support training, and $20,000 for the radio cash sustainment, to build the radio cash for the emergency manager in case of an emergency, can pass out radios to people.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement Number A-12-47.
Can I second that motion?
The motion is proper second to approve Agreement Number A-1247. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify five, say nine. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove an Agreement Number A-1248, an employment contract for the Grant County Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, on the work session, you had asked us to look at a cause, some language to put in there for termination for cause. I've given you new copies where we have that read. What we've done is, everything else is the same, but under the termination, we put in the event, the attorney is terminated for cause, there will be no severance paid, cause will be defined as client abuse, malpractice, fraud, embezzlement, felonious behavior, willful unauthorized disclosure of confidential information, or a serious misuse of the position. I spoke with, Mr. Gorman had reviewed that language, as well as I spoke with John Lynn Martinez, who's an attorney we use out of Albuquerque for the insurance pools, and when I was up at my meetings in Las Cruces, she was there presenting some cases, so I asked her, and she pulled that language from some court cases that have happened in the state of New Mexico that defined cause. And so that's where that language came from, was from actual court cases that made that definition of cause termination.
I'm glad that we answered that. And I think that's really good. I think we need to start putting this same language in all of the Yapewell employees, you know, kind of do away with the Super Bowl contracts.
Chairman Cass, and I move to approve the Agreement Number A-12-48, employment contract for county attorney with Abigail Robinson.
I second. The motion is proper second to approve Agreement Number A-1248. Is there any discussion on that motion? Yes, sir.
So is this a contract, and the information, and number two is, is there an increase in salary benefits prior to employment, or previous employment?
There is no increase in salary or benefits.
Thank you.
And yes, the contract is a public record, once we vote on it. Mr. Baldwin?
I can't hear you back there. Gordon, carry.
Okay. So there's a motion to approve the employment contract for the Grant County Attorney. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify five, say nine. Motion passes.
Now that you've approved it, this will go to the county attorney. She has not signed this contract yet, so it'll go to her.
Next item on the agenda is approve or disapprove Agreement Number A-1249, memorandum of agreement with the New Mexico Department of Transportation for Cory Caminos for FY 2013 in the amount of $58,650.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, on Tuesday, we talked about adding the budget to the agenda for Cory Caminos, and what we've done is, these are the agreements that make up Cory Caminos. The budget will come at a later date, we'll give you copies of the budget so you can review it, but it'll be on the agenda at a later date, because it has to be done as a budget resolution that you see. But Kim Dominguez is here that can answer any questions you might have about the funding, or how Cory Caminos is set up, what the different agreements, because there's a second agreement on here. The next item, 1250, is also for Cory Caminos, and it's for their operating. Their fiscal year starts October 1 and runs through September 30, and that's what we spoke of before, is it's different than our normal budget cycle, so you don't approve a new year budget for them when we do our regular preliminary budget, because their budget is about midterm.
And they are now under the county rights.
Yes.
So do you want to just have her go over this before we do anything?
Sure.
Yeah. Do you want to go over, do you want to go over these before we Before we go?
Thank you. The first one on your agenda, the $58,000, that's our 5316, which is a job access reverse commute grant. That is given to us to provide transportation in Grant, Luna, and Hidalgo counties. It's basically, we're transporting people to work. Currently, we have contracts in place with Deming Public Schools that provides the cash match for that grant. So the $58,000 that's on your agenda is the federal portion of that. The other, the 546 is our rural, 5311 rural transportation grant. We have, again, Luna, Hidalgo, Grant County. We provide demand response service. We provide fixed route, and we also provide modified fixed service under these grants.
Where do the matches come for the local on that one?
They come from our local municipalities. We have cities and counties that put in a cash match. We also have fair revenue and contract revenue that provides the cash match.
John, you went over how much those matches, how
Yeah. Luna and Deming are $60,000 each a year. Grant County's 30, Silver City's 30. And then, did they ever do the agreement for Lortberg and Hidalgo to be 10 each?
We don't have an agreement, but they have been paying 10 each.
And when the original agreement was started, the services were running in Grant County and Luna County, and so Hidalgo and Lortberg didn't start up, and they're running a demand type of service down in the Hidalgo County area?
We have demand and Cory Caminos in Grant, and then we also are in, sorry, Hidalgo, and then we provide transportation from Hidalgo to Grant County as well.
Thank you very much, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
Kim, welcome.
Kim, remember our numbers out for people using
Yes. This past year, our fiscal year just ended in September, we had 127,000 rides between the three counties. So every year
Can we just speak a little closer to the bottom?
Sorry, every year, we're growing by at least 5 percent.
Good. What about Cory Caminos?
That is growing every year. Last fiscal year, which was our 2011, we added that service in Hidalgo County, and for Hidalgo with their one liquor establishment, we have, we provide anywhere from 20 to 50 rides a weekend.
That's great. People using it.
Anything, Commissioner?
No, just welcome aboard and start joining us on the work sessions.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll get you a chair.
And a nameplate.
I'm just saying that. Okay, so approve or disapprove Agreement Number A-1249?
Second.
To approve?
Yes.
There's a motion to approve that's seconded to approve A-1249. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify five, say nine. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A-1250, memorandum of agreement with the New Mexico Department of Transportation for Cory Caminos for the fiscal year 2013 in the amount of $546,976?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Agreement Number A-12-50.
Can I second that motion?
There's a motion to approve A-1250. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify five, say nine. Motion passes. Moving to the bids. Approve or disapprove bid number B-1205, Ford all-wheel-drive four-door utility vehicles?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we talked about this on Tuesday. We received, we bid for, bid a price agreement bid for Ford Explorers and Ford Escapes. We received three bids backed, one from Lolly, Lolly's Team Ford, from here in Silver City, Bob Turner Ford in Albuquerque, and Monette Ford in Socorro. You have your specifications there. The bids came in that Lolly was the lowest on the base price on the Ford Escape. Monette was the lowest on the Ford Explorer on the base price, but when we added delivery to that cost, if we wanted them delivered here to Silver City, their price went above Lolly's, and became, Lolly became low by roughly $250. So after reviewing everything, looking at the different specs that they gave, and we talked about the different engine sizes on Tuesday, it's our recommendation to the commission that we would award to multiple vendors, to Lolly's Team Ford and to Monette Ford. And the reason for it is just because it gives us the option. The Escapes, the Lolly bid a 1.6-liter engine, EcoBoost engine, and Monette bid a 2.0-liter engine, so it's a little bigger engine on that vehicle, has a little more horsepower to it, and so we would have the option, if we needed a vehicle that had a little more horsepower to it, we'd be able to go with that with the Escape. And then they're both very close on the Explorers, and so it would give us an option that if we went to the Ford and they couldn't provide us a vehicle in the time we needed it, too, we'd have an option to go somewhere else without having to go to the state price agreement and send all the money up to Albuquerque like we've had to always in the past. And so the way the bid was written, it can be awarded to multiple vendors, is how we wrote it, and it's also a price agreement, so it gives options that anybody in the state can choose to piggyback our bid that we've just done. And so people in Socorro, if they wish to buy from Monette Ford, they could actually buy from Monette Ford, and it would be cheaper for them, because they wouldn't have the delivery cost that we would have. Or if we were traveling and we knew we were coming through, we could plan on buying a vehicle and picking it up, and then we wouldn't have the delivery cost, because we're already making that trip with people. So it gives us options. And so our recommendation would be to Lolly and to Monette Ford for both vehicles each. And then it doesn't obligate us to buy anything, but it does give us options.
I think it's nice that we're going to be able to buy some local vehicles instead of being buying out of town, that's what I think. So I'd accept a motion to
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve bid number B-1205, going to Lolly, Lolly Team Ford here locally, and Monette Ford, Inc., out of Socorro.
Can I second that motion?
There's a motion to approve bid number B-1205. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Again, I'd just like to say, we've been advocates for staying local, you know, for these past two years, and I'm glad we are. I'd like to see us do everything we can to continue purchasing here locally, unless there's absolutely no way that we can get the vehicle we want in time or what have you, but we need to do everything we can to stay here with Lolly.
Yeah, no, and that's what we tried to do with this, is in the past, we've checked, and the state price agreement has always just been so low that it's hard for local vendors to get close to it, and so we could never justify the $6,000 difference to go and buy from a local vendor compared to the state price agreement. With this bid that Lolly gave, or that Lolly gave on that Explorer, that puts them within $500 of the state price, and that can be justified, because we're not going to have to travel, that money's going to recirculate into our community, because it's a local vendor, and so that's not a bad. They really came to the table and did a good job, because like I said, in the past, the last Escape we bought for the planning department of the state price agreement was $18,000. We checked with the local Ford dealer, and they wanted $31 for the same vehicle, and you just couldn't justify paying that much more to stay locally. But now this has made it to where it is competitive, and we can spend our money locally instead of sending it to Albuquerque all the time.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify five, say nine. Motion passes. At this time, I'd accept a motion to recess the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
Summon.
All those in favor, signify five, say nine.
Aye.
Motion passes. Called order the Grant County Indigent Hospital Healthcare Claims Board. One item on the agenda, it's approve or disapprove the September 2012 indigent claims. This year, or this time, there are 1,179 claims for a total of $685,176.15.
Chairman Cass, and I move to approve the September 2012 indigent claims.
I second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify five, say nine. Motion passes. I'd accept a motion to adjourn the Grant County Indigent Healthcare Claims Board. All those in favor, signify five, say nine. Motion passes. Called order the Grant County Board of Commissioners from recess at this time will stand for county reports. Mr. Assessor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the board, just want to remind people, they do have employees out in the Membres area, they do carry their identification, the vehicles are marked, and so I just want to let people know that they're out there. Other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Any questions for the Assessor?
Thank you, Mr. Vea.
Mr. Treasure?
Commissioner, gentlemen and commissioners, I just got a call this morning that our 2012 bills, tax bills, have been printed, and they'll be mailed out on the 31st. So people should be seeing them the first week of November.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Chairman, commissioners. Just wanted to remind everyone that early voting is going on in our office the rest of the week, 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, Saturday at the Baird Community Center from 9 to 6, along with the rest of this week, from 9 to 6 at the Baird Community Center. Next week, in our office is the final week for early voting, will be open from 8 to 5, Monday through Saturday next week. The Baird Community Center will be open Tuesday through Saturday next week from 9 to 6. And the 3rd of November is the last day to early vote, for those of you that want to cast your ballots early. Our office has processed 4,355 ballots already. That includes people coming into the office to vote, and those ballots that were sent by mail. That leaves us right now at 20 percent voter turnout already, so interest is high. I urge residents to come in and vote early. Don't leave it for the last minute, you never know what could come up. Again, the voting centers that most, or all county residents can use actually, are going to be open on Tuesday from 7 to 7. Those are at the Tyrone Community Center, the Silver City Women's Club, the Business and Conference Center next to ACE, the National Guard Armory, the Baird Community Center, and the Hurley Community Center. And those residents that live in the rural areas, Cliff High School, San Lorenzo Elementary School, Hachita, Red Rock, Mule Creek, and the Sapiro Fire Department, and the PA Fire Department, they can all vote there.
I love that, that's a great information. Thanks for doing that.
Well, thank you. We're going to have a few more in there. Other than that, if you have any other questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for us? Same here?
I don't think that it's the right team. Now I can buy Randy's cars. He's been asking for it for a year. Terry hasn't been bothering me as much as Randy.
Are we supposed to take all this, all this?
Excuse me. The chairman's in the fourth. Terry's been drinking.
Your report's over. Your report's over now.
He's really nervous.
So, but no, it's going to make it easier for us, like we said, to spend money locally and actually have that money revolve in the community, that those employees work here, live here, and spend their dollars here. And unfortunately, the way that state price agreements always seem to work is it's Albuquerque vendors, and nothing against Albuquerque, but we're taking our tax dollars from our local residents and sending them up to another group of residents in the state to have them spend the monies that are provided by the locals down here, and so now we can at least start spending that money down here and use their tax dollars in their own community.
And I was keeping in mind that we have to follow the bidding process.
Yes, no, and we did. We followed it, so we'll go forward, and we hope to do more of these price agreements so that we can try and open it up for local businesses to do more business with us.
try and open it up for local businesses to do more business with us.
Mr. Commissioner?
The only thing, John and Mr. Gorman are researching, if in fact the liquor sales passes, how effective that becomes immediately, or how effective, when it becomes effective for these various establishments.
Yeah, Mr. Gorman's looking at that. One thing that we're also looking into is these individuals that currently have liquor licenses in the county would have to go back to the state, I think, to change, is what we think. You know, we're trying to research that to find out, and we're also trying to see if that constitutes, that it has to be a public hearing in front of the commission, because whenever there's a change to a liquor license, it comes back down to the commission, and you have to hold a public hearing, give two weeks' notice of a public hearing, and then send that back up to the state. So we're researching all of that information, so that we can have it for any of the businesses in the county that this affects.
So we should have something by the next meeting?
We hope to, yes.
Well, in my report, I saw Ms. Young come on in, and I don't, I think we missed the public input, but I'd like to go ahead and allow you some time to speak and, over your road, if you care to.
No problem. No problem.
Hi, my name's Jessica Vada. I'm a resident of the Loma Barra State subdivision, and I thought Lonnie Sandoval thought we were on the agenda today, so we must have misunderstood, had a miscommunication, but he had drafted, and I guess worked with, I'm not sure who he worked with, but on getting a, creating an improvement district sheet set up for residents to sign, so I guess we just want to make sure we're still in process, and other than getting these signs, what we need to continue doing to make sure we are moving forward still with the project.
Unfortunately, Anthony's not here, he's on vacation.
Okay.
Oh, is he here now? Okay, okay. I thought he was in Vegas. Okay. Well, anyways, he isn't here, so
Okay.
If we can get Lonnie to keep meeting with him, I know that Anthony's doing his best to guide him in the right direction, and try to get this done as soon as possible.
Okay.
I actually spoke with the county attorney yesterday. Things are proceeding.
Okay.
So you just, once government gets a hold of it, it just takes time.
Okay, well, Lonnie just wanted to make sure we were here, and he wanted to, that way we knew we were still working on it, and
And you're welcome to come and ask every time, but it's not going to speed it up.
Okay. I think he just wanted to make sure we weren't forgotten, and that it had been pushed aside.
Definitely not, definitely not. We were definitely happy guys moving forward, and when it does come to government, it does take a long time. Unfortunately, there's a lot of, a big, long process, but we will succeed.
Okay, well, we just wanted to make sure. We're trying, and we appreciate you guys working with us, so, thank you. Okay.
Do you have anything else, Commissioner?
No, sir, that is it.
That's it, huh? Well, we're still proceeding also with the Fair Barn, we're moving towards that. And just to answer a couple of questions that the gentleman had at the beginning of the meeting, it's been, other than the elected officials, it's been several years since any county person has had a raise. So just letting you know, there probably will be raises in the future. Okay. I guess I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.